All the meeting to order, Mr. Hunt, Ms. Hunt? Yep, that too. Do we need to suspend the rules on this? Do we need to suspend the rules? Need a motion to suspend the rules. Read by Mr. Shoemaker.
Second.
Second by Mr. Creel. Any discussion? All in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Clerk would read the revisions.
To the consent agenda, we're adding 5 GG resolution accepting the bid of DCR Emergency Services and authorizing a contract for the bring clearing and removal in preparation for hurricane disaster to bring.
Thank you, Chair. And a motion to approve the agenda as amended. So, read by Mr. Creel. Second by Mr. Shoemaker. Any discussion? All in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Mayor's report?
Thank you, Mr. President. Welcome, everyone. See a lot of smiling faces here and hope they're smiling at the end of one of the last sessions in August of 2025. Ms. Hunt, would you like to say something? I'm just checking. Come on up and say it again.
Hey, don't get into your mouth, people. You know what I told you?
I hope that's bread.
What does that mean?
That means you're asking for something.
I'm not in town.
Oh, okay. That too.
I just came to tell y'all, I am Susan Hunt, and I came to tell y'all thank you for all you do to come to Mississippi Mardi Gras and everything. So you see, that's my comment.
Did you sign in? Oh, good gracious. You did, just so. Thank you, banana, blueberry. Okay, very good.
I'll sign in. Thank you very much.
You notice, Ms. Hunt, when you're here, David doesn't Skype in. He makes sure he makes an appearance to get that bread, but anyway.
All right, thank you. While we're waiting on proclamation for childhood cancer week and events, I'm going to say a few other things about the events coming up. We have on Friday at 10:00 a.m. at the Biloxi Visitor Centers. You know, remember, the day that changed the world for us, and that's going to be Katrina 20 years. I think Representative Mike Isell will be the featured speaker. We've got a number of other folks that have been involved in part of the event and the recovery and, you know, the future that we're facing because of Katrina. So that'll happen at 10:00 a.m. at the visitor's center. On Sunday at 3:00 p.m. at the Civic Center, August 31st, will be the Hall of Fame, Sports Hall of Fame event at the Civic Center. There'll be an exciting number of persons and speeches, and I think we're featuring a number of team legends, I think the 1959 Notre Dame, a number of Biloxi out baseball, and another, I think, set of people to remember, people and teams to remember as far as Biloxi. And right now, Rebecca, you and I will come up and talk a little bit about the events. You've had a number of events for childhood cancers. Very special to me. I think we attended an event at the Ground Zero Sunday, wasn't it, Sunday? So please come up and we'll cap names a little bit, okay? Oh, it's okay. Just come on up and I'll... Let me sign it first. Let me read it first, can we? Whereas September is designated as National Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. More than 15,000 children under the age of 18 will be diagnosed with cancer in the United States in 2025, including more than 120 in Mississippi. Cancer is the main cause of death by disease among children in the United States. Nearly 500,000 survivors of childhood cancer are alive in the United States today. By age 50, more than 99% of childhood cancer survivors have had a chronic health problem and 96% have experienced a severe or life-threatening condition caused by toxicity in the treatment of that initial that saved their life. Childhood cancer is the least funded cancer by the government, and it is up to nonprofit organizations like St. Barbara's Foundation to raise as much needed funds. Therefore, Andrew Fofo Gilch, Mayor of Biloxi, Mississippi, do hereby proclaim September 2025 National Childhood Awareness Cancer Month. Thank you. Jamie, you're going to get my picture. Put the bottom across your eyes.
So this was our first event last Sunday, August 17th, in Biloxi, and it was our best event we've ever had. We've been doing this for five years on the coast. We raised triple the amount of money on that day, and the mayor actually came out, which was nice and different from Gulfport. But I think we will be having this event in Biloxi next year for sure, and we'll be doing more events in Gulfport, or in Biloxi. And we'll still continue our work up and down the coast. A lot of you know, a lot of kids here on the coast specifically have been diagnosed with cancer over the past 10 years, and we're trying to get to the bottom of that. We're trying to get a children's hospital built on the coast as well. I'm a childhood cancer survivor myself. I had leukemia when I was 12 years old in 1996, and that's why I'm passionate about it and I fight for people like his granddaughter who are also cancer survivors and those kids that we've lost. So it's really important that the city of Biloxi goes gold again for September. We've got support from fire and police here in the area and the city council, so it means a lot to me as a survivor and all of the kids out there that are fighting. So thank you guys so much for doing this, and I look forward to seeing another gold next month.
That's right, September.
September.
Yeah, we're lighting the lighthouse gold, so look at the lighthouse when we're in there. Thank you, Rebecca. Appreciate it. Thank you. And I think that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor. Any departmental reports? They're being done, we'll move on to council reports. Mr. Creel?
Yeah, we got the Fourth Annual Gulf Coast Tramp and Cook Off and Festival from September the 5th through the 7th. It's going to be right around the corner. And we'll have a boat, RV, car show, Bronco and Mustang show, and it's going to be real good. Thursday, the 28th, we're going to have a town hall meeting for Ward 1 and Ward 2. So 6 o'clock, right, Marshall? 6 o'clock. Anyway, if anybody's interested, get with me after this. I just want to let y'all know, if anybody wants to come. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. We'll come back to Mr. Marshall, Mr. Neal.
I just wanted to say, Jamie, thanks a lot for Hillard Park starting to look good. I'm not getting any phone calls, so if anybody got any problems, call me up in Ward 3.
Use my phone.
Okay. I'm ready. I'm ready to go to work. But that's it. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Creel?
Yes, if you could, run for a call mic. Excuse me. No, just kidding. No, just to follow up on my comments from last meeting regarding Memorial Hospital and their suspending services of labor and delivery, I did follow up with Mr. Kimney, who's a very nice guy, called up and we had a long conversation, and he actually agreed and said going forward rather than using the termination or no longer delivering babies. He likes the analogy of suspending because he's all in favor of giving it back, and it's going to take, it's a real lengthy process. It's not going to happen overnight. To use your analogy, Rick, it's a 30-minute mile and a seven-year mile, and I think we're only seven-year mile, but he thinks it's more like three years that maybe we can get those services back. So it's a staffing issue, and I know we're all vouch for Biloxi, and we want to continue to people. For them to have the opportunity to say that they were born in Biloxi, so that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Tuesday?
Yes, a suggestion. I know periodically we recognize employees who have reached employment milestones with the city, 5, 10, 15, 20, in some cases 35 or 40 years. It'd be nice if folks, when they retire and leave the city, if we just recognized them sometime after they leave, whether we do that three times a year for any retirees or just the following council meeting, but it would be nice to do that, I think. A reminder, we have a Ward 5 meeting, maybe September 8th at 5:30 at the Snyder Recreation Center. That's open to the public. It's not just residents of Ward 5, so if you'd like to attend, feel free to do so. Just to remind them, still getting calls on the easement behind Carter Road. We talked about that, and it's really just, the easement starts at Randall Drive, goes north just behind two or three homes, and there's a fence that was in the way that's been removed, maybe Bishoged or whatever, but they worry about critters in their backyard, and these are senior citizens, so appreciate that. Pine Grove Avenue, Coliseum has a west gate for the west parking lot that they open after concerts. They had a, I don't know, Dirks, Bentley? David would know who he is. I don't know. I know the Beatles, that's about it. And they've not been to the Coliseum, but 11:15, the concert was open. They've got four areas where folks can leave the Coliseum. They opened to speed the traffic off the premises. They opened that west gate, so folks who are trying to sleep on a Friday night or Saturday night, whenever that guy was there. 11:15, we have horns honking, the lights, the noise, the music, the hollering, the bump of the bump of traffic, so maybe, maybe with the Bobstary Extension coming through and the egress from the Coliseum on the west side, maybe that would resolve that issue. But anyway, they're getting tired of it, and I would too if I lived in that neighborhood. Also on Pine Grove Avenue, I know that I had mentioned the, I think it's some of the infrastructure on Pine Grove needs to be replaced, a lot of sinkholes, that kind of stuff. The Planning Commission, any progress on the tree mitigation ordinances that we were looking at? I know since February, it's just as trees continue to be removed, the mitigation really isn't sufficient, and I know the Planning Commission's looking at that. Mr. Creel, thank you.
We have, we formed a committee made up of some of the, along the Planning Commission for tree census. We've been meeting for over a month now, actually two months, and we're about halfway through the ordinance. We're about to start the mitigation next meeting, which will be a week from this Friday. We just had one meeting last Friday, but we are working on it diligently, and we're making good progress.
Thank you, Mr. Creel. Appreciate that. The folks who live in Edgewater Estates, we had another water line break, I think it was Saturday night, I believe, could have been Friday nights, about 10:15, and resulting bore water notice. Again, I'm sure I'll have residents there on the 8th. If not, I'll be disappointed. You might be disappointed too, but I'm sure they will be there. That's the point of contention. We just need to come up with a plan and a schedule when we're going to replace those water lines. Mr. Mayor? I don't know if anybody can answer this question, except maybe Diane, I don't think she's here. The allocation of our opioid settlement funds, I don't know what that amount is, Peter. I know it's comprised of several different, I guess, small funds that comes, filters through the state and then comes to the cities or the counties. Do you know about what amount we're speaking over?
I think it's roughly 70,000. It's basically just going into the general budget for the police at this point.
If I could just earmark about 15% of that for Judge in the youth court, Judge... That's why I wrote it down, Dickinson. Judge Dickinson. They send a letter in, and I'm sure they're asking all the cities with, who have kids coming before him in youth court. I don't have a problem with that. I hope my colleagues up here wouldn't either. Chief, I don't know if that would create any hardship for you, but if we could do that, that'd be great, if somebody would make a note of that. Thank you, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tuesday, and Mr. Shoemaker.
Just one thing today. I'll just bring up again, and I know I beat this drum often, but grass cutting in Ward 7, please. I know it's Public Works is, I mean, they've been cutting some, I've seen them up there, but there's a lot, a lot of areas that haven't been cut yet, and I know that on a schedule, and I don't know if we need to maybe look at that schedule or try to do something, revamp it or something, but I'm getting a lot of complaints again. I've ridden by several streets, and it's, hadn't been cut in a while, so if we could see about getting Public Works maybe to cut some grass up there, I'd appreciate it. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker. Mr. Marshall?
Okay. As far as the parks are concerned, we're going to go with Bush Park first. Jamie? On Bush Park, we're going to ask that we get signs that, "No dogs allowed." We have someone who was going into the park with their dog, purposely like walking their dog, and the tenants are really, the residents in the area don't like that, and they called me about it, and I don't know this person. They're trying to describe the person to me. I'm not even interested in trying to track anybody down, but here is dog with some signs. Is there a sign that we have that says what the penalty is?
I don't know. Just kind of out of the blue, I'd like to see if we prohibit dogs in parks or ordinance?
I mean, there is one small sign on there, but that for that park was in the wrong meaning. But if you wanted to, I can meet you over there. We walk through, I can get a couple of tents that complain about it, and we'll walk through and see what the problem is, and we'll try to get it resolved. But if this, if this is a park and it has one sign that says it, but it's not in the right place, it seems as though it's a, someone who's just purposely trying to act against the tenants.
Looking to him.
Okay. All right. The next thing is for the Hennepin Park, I'm not sure this is going to be for Mr. Weaver for you, but the citizens are still complaining about, the people hanging around. I've spoken very clearly, it is a thousand percent better, and they do realize that, but it's still a few bad characters. As far as that back porch, I know they're going to try to do something, but they don't want the back porch torn down off of there at all. They just want that back porch fixed. They like the house. The house has a lot of history, and it means a lot to them, so any changes, they're not concerned. They don't want to do that. So we're going to make sure that, you know, I tell my, make sure that it's not, nothing's going to be changed about the house, it will be repaired. Am I speaking correctly?
You're correct. Okay. The mayor and I rode by there yesterday and looked at it, and so we'll do those. Once we get the signs up, and I don't know, Jamie, if we got that park, I think it's going to close at 8 o'clock is what you agreed with, Mayor? And I think that's what you asked for, Mr. Marshall, was 8 o'clock. And Chief, we'll need to enforce that, starting on that. I know Jamie's working on those signs currently right now, but we'll take a look at all of these, and we'll make certain that those are done. On Bush, we'll take a look at that sign, and we'll get it moved over, or we'll put some more out there on those. Same thing, Chief, and animal control go through. If they're out there, we'll go ahead and cite them, and then do whatever the ordinance allows us to do at that point in time.
We were in agreement that, you know, that facility needs to stay as it is and, you know, cure the bad actors that are causing issues for everyone else. We're committed to that.
How are we coming on, maybe getting the fence, so we want the front of the park is closed, we just want the park closed?
Yeah, we got the bid in yesterday, I think Jamie sent it to, to get it repaired, and so, and we should have those funds, so I would say give it a couple of weeks to work through the process to get it done.
Okay.
But yeah, we did get the bid process in to get that fixed, along with the railing.
Perfect. Okay, the next thing is, thank you, Jamie. The next thing is on Sherry Lane, a couple residents complaining that they're overgrowth, going into the streets to scratch up their cars, coming down the street. Here's a couple trash piles on Sherry Lane, we're going to run through there, you'll see what we're talking about. I believe, Chief, you came out to, you sent the deputy out to come up Division Street, heading towards, you know, project area, our baby apartment, can you think of the name of the street? Huff Alley. Okay? They're also, you know, she was explaining to me, she know, possibly people just parking in the road, can't get through, things like that. So what do you think, the solution to that? Okay. All right. So I would like to make sure that they understand that you are working on it, we are going to get somewhere with it. Okay? What I like to do is continue to, you know, when residents speak of something, we want to address it quickly and immediately. I appreciate you guys doing it so far. I'm not hitting any problems I can go and complain about as far as your responses. You seem to be very positive into the general satisfaction of the residents of East Biloxi. And you know, I would say so, if there wasn't, so, yeah. And it's kind of, you know, it's kind of like I'm, oh, you know, I have nothing to complain about, really, but it's good. Mr. Creel? You will? I apologize, John. The real Creel? I'd like to get a developer, if you don't mind, a system, whereas in East Biloxi, we're trying to, trying to push to do as much economic development possible through there. I've taken off from my main business, and with my lovely wife's permission, I've devoted way more time to the city than I promised her I will. She understands it's necessary. With that being, with that being said, anything, we can get a system together where anybody come to the city, and speaking of developing a business, pulling the business license in East Biloxi, anybody who wants to build, pregnant in East Biloxi, I'd like to have an email to let them know of that. I'd like to be able to talk to them, and I'd like to be able to make sure that we're handing off anything, like someone trying to do something that we don't want or don't need, we can be able to hear about in the beginning. Instead of we having meetings and voting things, I can find out what's going on, and also I can encourage what we need to have encouraged. I can't speak for the whole council, but for, when I say East Biloxi, am I, am I going to light track with that?
Yep.
Okay. We'd like to know, if you don't mind copying him also, Ward 1. Mr. Neal, you are an enthusiast. Okay. But we really have to know, like this ice cream shop is coming, is going before the review committee, I'd like to have know about that. I know, then I talk to them, and I, you know, I love ice cream, and I think it's good. I think it's going to be bringing jobs for the young people. That's what we're looking for, you know, and if you can well know it's coming, with all us having to find out about it, and these meetings, you know, I can at the people know.
What we can do is, we can add, actually, all the, through the distribution list for DRC, the first step where a commercial developer comes in. We post an agenda every Friday right after lunch for the next Wednesday's meeting, and you know, some of those are projects that are just coming to the table for the first time, some of them might be coming for the second time, but at least it would give you a heads up about what's on the agenda for that next Wednesday.
Okay. All right, I appreciate that, but I also like to make sure that anybody pulling up a permit in East Biloxi, I'd like to know about it.
Okay.
The last thing is that, are we going to have another meeting this month? This the last, this the last meeting?
Last meeting.
Okay, last meeting. Okay. This right here, two things, two dates, and important dates, remember. On September the 18th, I'm going to have my first Ward meeting for Ward 2, and things that I just ask about, we'll give the opportunity for those who live in Ward 2 to come and speak and talk about. If there are any problems, I'm going to make sure that I put the request out to all the heads of departments. Mr. Weaver is going to show up with three hats for all his heads in his department.
Councilman, where is that location?
It's going to be at the Greig Center. We would like to have it in, in Ward 2, however, Ward 2, they always have it.
What time, Jamie? What time is the Ward meeting?
It is at 5:30. I have to check and double check and find out. But I was talking about my location, having it in Ward 2, but we don't have a facility in Ward 2 to have our Ward meetings, but God's going to bless us, we're going to fix that, we're going to change that. The last thing is, we're...
Civic Center?
Civic Center. That's in, that's not in Ward 2.
That's in Ward 2.
I'm claiming Civic Center. You're claiming Civic?
Just make sure you have AC, please.
You know, we want to keep moving on the subject matter. The last thing, and I at least, is more of a personal matter. When I was running for office, I asked our young lady to assist me, to stand by me, to help me, and that's my wife. On the 31st will be our anniversary, and I want to give a shout out to my wife for sticking with me, standing by me. This is not what she signed up for, I know, because she reminds me. That was not in the country. But she has done so, and I love her, and I appreciate it. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. I just have a few things, be short and brief, but the first one, I'd like to acknowledge, we lost a young, one of our young athletes and young men in the community, Marcus Dickie. He was very well thought of, not only in this community, but at Mississippi Gulf Coast Community College, and had a promising future, and was cut short by a tragic accident, so I'd like, if we could close this meeting in memory of him, that would be great. Secondly, can I get an update on engineering on the dredging project? And where are we, and if there's any new information, please share it.
I know they pulled out to go, so they had to switch barges, and they had, needed about two weeks for their small barge was ready. I don't know, that's actually been about two weeks ago, so I need to get you an update on that. I don't know if they've come back yet. I don't think they have, to be honest, but I'll get you an update and I'll let you know.
Okay. Thank you, Director. Appreciate it. And the last thing I want to talk about, we got a special meeting after this. We conclude our regular meeting on the budget. I definitely want to thank the Colonel for meeting. We met early Friday morning, 7:30 in the morning. We had notes from Mr. Tuesday and notes from several council members. We got some information turned around. We trimmed approximately 4 million plus out of that budget. It's going to be a hard thing. We've got to live within our means. We're going to ask others that it might affect, that they have to live within their means as well. But there's a lot of hard work. We'll get into more detail in that, but Colonel, thank you for taking the time and getting together, and I'd like to thank the council members for providing some input, for letting us get to the point today. It still has to endure the scrutiny of council members at our special meeting today, and we'll see if we can get that budget possibly put to bed today, maybe. So that concludes my report. We'll go into citizens' comments. Got a pretty big crowd here today, so we're going to keep it to the three-minute maximum. We've got a total of 45 minutes during this part of the agenda. I'll ask for you to raise your hand to be recognized. When you come up to the front, speak clearly into the microphone, including your name and your address for the clerk to record. This is not question and answer. Try not to, if you, if you're disgruntled about something, try not to be personal and attack anybody by name, and we'll keep the calm, and we'll go ahead and get started. So on my left, your right, gentleman in the front. I'll get to you next. Gentleman in the front. That you?
Honor, I get to sign in behind Susan Hunt. Good afternoon, my name is Sean Cross. I live at 11469, Road 537 here in Biloxi, and today I'm speaking in opposition of the zoning amendment from residential estate restricted to community business, with the WC4 property as the owner and Mr. Verma as the applicant. Two points I want to drive home today. Number one... Number one is drainage. The southwest sector of I-10 and Shriners Boulevard, I received 100% of that drainage from my property. I've given you guys my survey as well as a colored picture, then it explains that in detail. That drainage, it's a man-made water course about 50 years old and I can tell that just because it was dug probably with a giant tracco and all of the dirt was piled up on my side of the property. And there's trees that I can't even reach around. That's why I'm estimating at least 50 years old. It originates on Mr. For's property at about 1,000 feet south of Oaklawn Road. It crosses onto my property by about 12 feet. All of that water drains into the wetlands, into the marsh across our land. I have looked into, uh, if there's any recorded gross easements across our property and there are none. I checked out to the Harrison County Engineering Department, which this is probably done well before Biloxi annexed this portion of the city. And they have no record of this happening whatsoever. And I was told to find out anything, I need to do a, a title search. We already did that when we bought the property six years ago. We have no recorded utility easements across this parcel of land. Second thing I want to talk about is fill. Mr. Prickett, the engineer representing Mr. Verma, stated to the planning commission meeting that they would be bringing in up to six feet of fill. I want to put that into context for you. I ran the numbers. This is a three acre parcel. It's a little over 130,000 square feet. For every foot that we increase vertically with fill, we are looking at 4,840 cubic yards of fill. That equates to 242 dump trucks, triaxals that hold a 20 cubic yard load. If we go to six feet high, we are looking at a staggering number of 29,000 cubic feet of fill. Okay? That's 1,500 dump trucks. That is a tremendous amount of fill. Do we really want 24-hour service station that's going to bring 24 hours worth of problems? Do we want to, as a city, get into now directing storm surge? Because this is a solid footprint encompassing three acres. Trust me, gentlemen, I know a thing or two about storm surge. It's my business. It's what I do for a living. And in closing, I just want to say something really quick. We, everybody in this room, has a duty and a responsibility to protect the city of Biloxi and make sure that we execute good, sound growth for this city. Because in the future, we're not going to be sitting here. It's going to be our children and our grandchildren. And they're going to be stuck with the decisions that are made today and in the future. And I just ask that you take the information that I've given you and the pictures and make a good, sound judgment today. And when I stand up, everyone who's in opposition, please join me.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. All right. Lady in the back?
Um, this would be for the budget meeting. I have a medical trip to go to this afternoon, so I can't stay for the other meeting. My name is Lori Massey. I am the Director of Mississippi Coast Crime Stoppers. Also serve on the State Advisory Board and on the National Board. This past weekend, an individual wanted on a felony charge out of Jackson County, along with misdemeanors from Gulfport and Diabreville, was arrested in Biloxi. All because someone recognized him on Crime Stoppers social media and submitted a tip. This isn't unusual. In May, a woman who stole a vehicle in Texas was located here in Biloxi. In June, a man wanted in Florida for domestic violence and written death threats was also taken into custody here again, thanks to Crime Stoppers in Biloxi. Now, why do tipsters call us instead of going directly to police? We can't say for certain, but we know that people value anonymity and that's what we give them. They also may not want to be personally involved or they may be voted, motivated by a potential reward. Whatever the reason, the end result is the same. Law enforcement gets the valuable information they might not otherwise receive. That's the power of Crime Stoppers. We give citizens a safe, anonymous way to share what we know, what they know, and help agencies close cases faster without tying up many valuable resources. Every hour, an officer doesn't have to spend chasing down leads as money saved for your city. And when fugitives are caught sooner, there's less chance they'll commit new crimes, meaning fewer victims, less investigation time, and lower costs for the criminal justice system overall. Crime Stoppers is a proven partner to every law enforcement agency in our seven counties. We help them work smarter, stretch their resources further, and keep our communities safe. That's why we're, I'm here tonight to ask for 5,000, the same as what we received last year, and to help continue giving Biloxi what, Biloxi residents what they deserve. There's no questions, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. We appreciate your support.
Thank you. Anyone on my left, your right, raise your hand to be recognized if you want to speak. Yes, ma'am. That you? Don't look back.
Hi, my name is Kimberly Woodward. I'm the manager of Belmont Gardens, um, located on 871 Motzy Road. It was built in 2009. It's had a lot of, um, destruction since then, obviously. We have a drainage in the back. Some people call it a ditch, some people call it a creek. Um, we have had numerous amount of flooding. The ditch comes off of several public, uh, companies. And we also have a new construction that's right, um, right above us with elevation. All of the dirt and flood comes down to us. Recently, as of July, we had 13 units flood out and it's because of this creek in the back. Um, can I have everyone from Belmont Gardens? So, these are senior citizens that can barely move around your grandmother and we need help. We've been asking for over eight years. We put it in writing. We've done everything that we can to make this work.
Thank you. Anyone else on my left? Yes, ma'am. Oh, yes, sir. I'm sorry. Okay.
Hello, everyone. I'm William Graves. I live at 11671 River Estate Circle. I would like to speak about the proposed, uh, gas station to be built, uh, nearby our residence on River Estate Circle. Um, I'm opposed to it and I'm going to get into a couple of things. Why? I'm not opposed to it just because it's in my backyard. Discuss a couple of things here. Um, I'm opposed to it. There's a possibility of another surge. We've all lived back there. If you've lived back there since Katrina, you know the surge will, underneath the interstate, underneath the overpass, the surge line went to the north side of the exit off-ramp. He came home the day of Katrina. They had a telephone, they were washed up that high. When did the surge came that far? So why, no, there's a possibility. There is 100% certainty of hazardous waste runoff from a facility that's, that provides the services that this place will do. Transmission fluid, brake fluid, power steering fluid. These things are horrible y'all to get into the environment. This runoff is going to follow gravity. There's no way around it. I wish we had a map up there during the planning commission meeting. We had an aerial view where you could see just how close the wetlands are to the proposal we're referring to. It's going to runoff into this wetland. I'm also opposed to it due to the precedent set by Mr. For. We don't have a property grid up. Mr. Shoemaker is familiar with this. We have one residence on the east side of River Estate Circle in this big chunk of land we wish to resume. The one residence was a residence estate's restricted parcel called out by Mr. For that is on our street. This was there when I lived in, in 1993. I feel a precedent was set, or some expectations of a precedent was set. That was going to be real estate's restriction. Our subdivision is already all restricted. So we're asking the council to protect us once again. The next thing real quickly, my, my one time, there was no notification given, y'all. I got nothing in the mail. I only am here because some of my neighbors followed the city council document. Yes, I have a vested interest in this decision, y'all. This impacts my real estate values 10%. Almost $50,000. Times 30 of us back there, we, these wealthy people, we make money in this proposal. We will lose a little bit of half dollars in home equity back there if we lose a fraction of the percentage. It's not correct. I'm watching my, my other time, y'all. I should have had to wait and spend my time on notifications, y'all. That is horrible. I don't understand why I never received anything of it.
All right. Sir, your time's up, sir. Thank you. Thank you. In the back, did you have your hand raised in the back of the door? Okay. Anyone on my left, want to come up and speak? Raise your hand to be recognized. Anyone? Anyone on my right? Want to be recognized, come up and speak? Anybody in the back? All right. Thank you. Citizens' comments is now closed. We'll move on to the policy agenda.
Ordinance to amend Chapter 2, Article 14 pertaining to municipal facilities.
Who was it moved and seconded by?
Tisdale Creo.
Tisdale, who?
Creo.
All right. Mr. Tisdale?
Excuse me, Peter, would you just hit the hot points if you don't mind? All right. This is in, um, this is a more, uh, let's say friendly to rental groups. Uh, following the amendment made by Councilman Levin to allow for 30-day cancellation and a 10% rider first refusal. Also, the existing rules had lots of different rentals for different spotlights and microphones and we did an inventory. A lot of those items either don't exist or really should just be included as part of the, the facility. Trying to rent an extra piece of pipe, when, you know, it's, it's just not really workable. So, um, I think also the old brick house in Sanger were taken off the list because, uh, the Sanger is going to be a separate situation with the facility operator. And, um, that's primarily the most of it. And I would say that although we did not have that workshop with the Mardi Gras groups, we've had no real, uh, further contacts or, I'm not going to say complaints. We just had no further feedback from them. And I think the ones I did talk to are very appreciative of the changes made.
All right. Thank you. I don't have anything to add, Mr. Creo.
All right. Mr. Creo?
So just two things to add. Uh, one for clarification, still the, uh, equipment rental for 2026 is still waived, um, with this. I know we had, we had that in the... Yeah. Okay. And then the second thing is just a clarification I got from Jamie and I appreciate that. I had a phone call. Um, so they can rent three years out. However, it's three years minus a day. So today being August 26th, they can go through, what's it, uh, 2028 or, uh, 20, uh, of August 25th? So it's three years minus a day that you can still rent out for the three years now. It's going to take Jamie and his crew probably two weeks or so to get on board in order to accommodate all of those requests, especially the future requests. So if the public didn't want to go cruise, should just be patient with him and his staff until they can get on board.
That deep, you're in there too, right?
I would add too, that, you know, it's sort of dependent on when Mardi Gras hits as far as, you know, it's out on my, my, of the second week after.
Right. Yeah, that's...
A lot of, not, you just can't do about three calendar, you know?
Right. Well, his, his...
There'll be some scheduling.
Scheduling is, is three years minus a day. So just to keep that heads up. If your ball happens to be February the 14th, you've got to call February the 15th for three years out. Just a heads up there, so. But no, thank you and Peter, thank you for the due diligence on this, hey.
Thank you, Mr. Creo. Any other comments on this ordinance? There being none, I'll call for the question. All in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Move on to the resolutions.
Resolution denying a zoning map amendment to authorize a change in zoning from residential estate restricted to community business for a portion of 8275 West Oaklawn Road.
Chair, entertain a motion for denial.
I'll, I'll second it.
All right. Read by Mr. Shoemaker, seconded by Mr. Tisdale. Mr. Shoemaker?
Yes, thank you. As you can see here today, the room is full with residents of this area, not residents from other areas in the city, residents and neighbors that surround this particular property. Uh, I met with, I don't know, a couple of dozen recently, all in opposition, all neighbors, and all have serious concerns, uh, many concerns, but one of them, that y'all have heard earlier was drainage. There is drainage issues. Um, obviously, if the developer is going to have to build this property up six feet or more, that water has to run somewhere. Already the water from the north side of the interstate all runs south. So this particular property is south of the interstate. So that's more water that is going to run and have to go somewhere and it's going to end up in these other yards. Um, obviously, if they weren't opposed and weren't concerned, they wouldn't have been here today. I know we've all had calls and messages. I've had personally dozens and dozens of calls and, and messages and emails, Facebook messages concerning this. Now, I met with, uh, the applicant Raj Verma, I don't know, a month or so ago. They've got other developments throughout Mississippi, I think in Louisiana. Nice, nice stations. I mean, they're nice developments. Is this still on? I'm sorry. I thought it cut off. And no doubt it would be a nice development. However, that being said, I know we have a fiscal responsibility for the city to make money and bring money into the city. However, we also were elected in this position to represent the citizens of the city and our ward. We're their voice. Obviously, with the number of calls and the people I've spoken with in opposition, I'm going to have to vote against it. I will not be able to support it. And so hopefully the rest of the council...
You can still be denied.
I'm going to vote for the denial. Yes, I won't be able to support the, the development. I will vote for the denial. Yes. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Tisdale?
Yes, as is me and you. We try and attend these planning commission meetings and, uh, it's interesting. I see a lot of the same faces here today. As I recall, on the, I think it's the north side of West Oaklawn Road, that's commercial. Is that correct? And on, on the south side of West Oaklawn, that's all residential estate restricted, residential. So there is no commercial south of, the commercial sites, uh, south of West Oaklawn. I, I think there was, uh, it, it established and looking through the transcript of that planning commission meeting, that there really is no compelling need for another gas station. There are two other gas stations, I think, I don't know, a mile, less than a mile away. I didn't clock it, but I believe that was the, the testimony there in the transcript. And, uh, there apparently has been a substantive change in the character of the neighborhood, um, as I think was established, uh, in that planning commission also. So having, having said that, uh, I'll support the denial. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tisdale. Any other comments?
Also have numerous emails and phone calls, so I would be for denial.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Graves. Any other comments from council members? Uh, I'd just like to ask one question of the director and I want to make sure I read this correctly. Can you give me the, just take you a second? Can you give me the vote of the planning commission for and against?
It was denied 11:00.
All right. There you go. All right. I don't think we have any further questions. Uh, we'll call for the question. This is, all right, make sure we get this right. This is to deny. You're voting to deny, uh, this application. So all in favor of the denial? All opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Congratulations. Next item?
Resolution authorizing self-funded employee group health insurance with HealthGram versus RX Mississippi Physician Care Network and Unity Re.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Made by Mr. Tisdale. Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Creel. Mr. Tisdale, can we just wait a moment till the room is cleared?
Sure.
Thank you.
They don't want to hear about the insurance?
No, I don't think so.
Good guy.
We can wait for him.
Thank you. And if there are any specific questions, Cy Easterly, wave Cy from the back. Cy Easterly is, is here from, um, I can't remember the name.
Paydons or Gallagher?
Yeah, he'll tell you when he gets up here, Gallagher Insurance. But anyway, for those employees who follow this, um, there is no increase in what the employees pay. There is, there continues to be a spousal surcharge of $60 a month. Uh, if your spouse is offered coverage at where their employer works and enrolls in the City of Biloxi's medical plan after they have refused coverage offered by their employer. So employees need to be aware of that. Um, the city will fund approximately 9.9 million roughly and some change, uh, in lieu of 120% fixed costs. So there's, as, as they say, a, a risk card of approximately one, one and a half million dollars. Um, that, that being said, that's about as knowledgeable as I am, that's the 10,000-foot view. Uh, but, uh, but again, Cy is here, if any of you may have questions. Thank you, Mr. Glavine.
Thank you, Mr. Tisdale. Mr. Creel?
Oh, nothing further.
Okay. Anyone else in the council have any question on this measure?
Did, did Cy want to say anything?
Cy, if you come on up, and, uh, as you're coming up, I, I'd just like to thank the insurance committee. Uh, it's comprised of Mr. Tisdale, Mr. Marshall, and myself, and we meet with Cy regularly. There was an actual increase in the cost to the city, and we did not pass, we, we did not pass that cost in any percent, uh, back to the employees, uh, so that, that was a good thing, and hopefully we can be successful in the future. Cy, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, just to echo what, what Dr. Tisdale said, we did meet regularly. There was an increase, but he chose to work the bulk of that increase, or actually all of the increase. Uh, you did have a good year claims-wise this year. Uh, since we last met, we had four, we had lasers on, which means there's an additional liability for the loan conditions that we just have. We were able to get, three of those were removed. So approximately $1 million or 900 something thousand dollars of liability was removed from your risk. So is that hard dollar cost? No, but is it savings on your liability? Absolutely. So we did do that since our last meeting, so that's a more encouraging news.
All right, any other question for Cy?
No, no question, but a comment. Cy, while you're there, I, I think the employees, with their contributions, basically, their contributions cover 8% of the cost, as was the case last year. So it's, it's a great benefit for the employees, and it's one that may be overlooked or taken for granted, but I, as Kenny said, I appreciate your hard work and working with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. That's it. Uh, there being no other questions, all in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries unanimous? Next, next item?
Resolution authorizing an unimprovident corporation to offer employees and administer voluntary life benefits and long-term disability benefits.
Chair entertain a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Tisdale, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Creel. Mr. Tisdale?
The purpose of this resolution is for those employees who wish to purchase these additional insurance products, whether it's voluntary life insurance or voluntary long-term disability. It's word of mouth to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Creel?
Nothing further.
Any comments from any other council members? There being none, call for the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimous? Next item?
Resolution authorizing Colonial Life and Accident Insurance Company to provide and administer cafeteria plan.
Chair entertain a motion? The chair will entertain a motion, please.
I, I will make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Tisdale. Do I have a second?
I'll say.
Thank you, Mr. Creel. Mr. Tisdale?
Uh, and again, the, these are also from, this is also for employees who wish to purchase an additional voluntary insurance program. It's optional. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Creel?
Nothing further.
Any other comments from the council? There being none, all in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries unanimous? Next item?
Resolution authorizing a service agreement with Medical Analysis to provide acute healthcare benefits to employees and retired City of Biloxi employees.
Chair will entertain a motion, please?
Sure. I'll go for the trifecta.
Thank you, Mr. Tisdale. Do I have a second? Mr. Gray? Mr. Tisdale?
Yeah, this is a service, again, this is a service of benefit that the city provides in, in order to help employees with their wellness. Uh, we've been contracting with Medical Analysis for a number of years, uh, and apparently very satisfactorily, all employees have to do is make an appointment, show up for that appointment, uh, and they receive services. And if there's a cost for those services, they're informed of that, but typically, for many of the services that are offered, they're offered at no, no cost to the employee. And Ms. Bogard is here, should any of you have any questions? Um, she's with, she is Medical Analysis.
That's right.
All right, so thank you, Mr. Tisdale. Move to Mr. Gray.
Nothing further.
Ms. Bogard, would you like to come up and say a few things? Or, you don't have to, but I'm giving you an opportunity if you'd like to.
What about Ms. Daff?
Ms. Daff, okay. Only thing I'd like to reiterate is what Councilman Tisdale said. This basically is urgent care plus for the city. Uh, we pay an amount, and the benefit is there's no co-pay. Unlike, if you go to an urgent care facility, they'll charge you whatever the 2550, whatever the, the co-pay is. So if you don't know what Medical Analysis is, please try to use it whenever you can. It'll save you a little change in your pocket, and, uh, it's a great benefit, and they got a good relationship with the city.
One comment.
Mr. Tisdale has a comment.
One comment. Uh, Ms. Bogard, if you could, please check with the person who's sneezing intermittently when, when you leave here. She may, she may need prompt attention. Thank you.
She needs housekeeping.
That's all I have.
Also, the city... I'm sorry, you want to come up to the microphone?
You did it, yeah, come on up. It's like The Price is Right. Come on down.
Well, that's okay. We got a little bit, we got a couple minutes to spare. Thank you.
So I just wanted to say, uh, that the city also says healthcare claims. Well, it's usually clinic, uh, because there are already filed insurance claims. The city pays a flat fee, Mark, and we see the, that fee. And so it's a win-win. The employees say, oh, they're out of pocket expenses, and the city saves a lot of healthcare. Yeah, this is savings as the experience is less because there is no filing on complaints. So they'll lower the experience, it's premiums now.
Thank you. That was good points. Thank you. The microphone just started working. Better.
You gotta holler at it.
All right. Any other, uh, comments? There being none, call for the question. All in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries unanimous? Need a motion for the consent?
So...
Moved by Mr. Tisdale. Do I have a second? I need a second? All right, Mr. Nail? Mr. Tisdale?
Uh, yes, and, yeah, I almost said Coach, uh, Mr. Weaver. If, if you would, explain on the items K, L, and N, these are, um, contractual agreements, and we're extending them for one month only, and as I understood, it was really a, a convenience for the city in these instances, if, I want to be sure I understood that correctly. But if you would explain why we're, why we're doing this. Yes, sir, as we go through, especially on yearly contracts, doing them all in October, that's where it's a mass exodus immediately. Taking these and moving them one month then allows us that opportunity to go ahead and get through at the first of the year, and then whenever they will expire, we've got that one-month period of time. So it's more of a convenience from our standpoint of being able to do those contractual agreements that we're going to be locked into for long-term anyway.
All right, thank you. Uh, that's all I have, Mr. Glavine. Thank you, Mr. Tisdale. Mr. Nail, you're next.
That's good.
All right. Mr. Gray? Mr. Shoemaker?
Yes. I'm sorry.
Come on, David, come on.
Right, y'all, I apologize. I, regarding the resolution, amendment in Public Works Department for, um, the Baseball Capital Maintenance Fund, is that money, is it earmarked right now for anything, or is that just being put in there for any maintenance issues arising in the future?
Next item?
I.
Yes, sir, it's going to be over at the Shucker Stadium. We've got multiple air conditioners, HVACs, that we're working on currently right now. So yes, we have that. We'll probably have some more, but it'll roll over until the next year.
Okay. Um, okay, I'm, and Z, also Z, and that's regarding the Shucker Stadium as well, the, uh, containment system. And I've read through all that, everything that's listed, and I know that's $135,000, but I guess per the contract from years ago, the City of Biloxi has to fund that?
Yes, sir. We own that.
Right.
Facility. All of the maintenance, as we go through, there's a portion of the Shuckers that they pay us on a yearly basis, and then we maintain all of our management. Peter, any comments?
Well, the, the netting was required by Major League Baseball throughout all of the minor league, uh, sort of stadiums. They've required that a year ago. The, uh, it's clearly a safety issue, I think, and, uh, something like that where the public is affected, that's clearly our responsibility.
Oh, and I understand that. I just, looking at this, and, and I know I've mentioned it before, and I love baseball, but it's, we're bleeding money for the Shucker Stadium, and I don't know that we're getting any return from it. Is there anything, and we can discuss this, I know, at another time, but is there, will that contract ever be renegotiated with the City of Biloxi? 12 years from now, or, so we've got 12 years with what we're doing now, and there's no way around any of these expenses?
Well, things are always, things are always changing. We're always having different ideas. I mean, we're in talks right now about more increased use in the offseason, but until that's concrete, we, we're not really going to come out and just announce it, although I guess I just did.
Well, I didn't mean for you to do that.
But, you know...
Our opportunity is to raid more, raise more revenue in, in the, the, the conditions that we were given, but, uh, unfortunately, you know, the debt service, the commitments that to, uh, the Major League Baseball, the conditions that we have to, to raise that revenue, it's pretty much limited.
Right, it, it, yeah, I've learned a lot with that recently, and it's, it's, I think, definitely limited.
Well, the Keesler Federal sponsorship, I mean, that's, that's helped, that's added 150,000 a year, but it's still, uh, you know, at some point, we have to look at it as the amenity itself and the spin-off that comes from that and the, uh, it's like the beach. What does a beach cost? What's the return investment on the beach? Would all of Howard developed, and would that area have developed out, uh, without that, or with what was there existing? So, you know, that's, that's the way to, I look at it, but also, we're looking at what can we do to improve the situation in the future.
Hopefully, there is some resolution to that, but that's all I have. Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker. I'd just like to follow up on that, and I understand the perception, perception's reality, but to say there's zero return or minimum return, I, I don't know how you can say that. We, we spend a million one on, on the pavement thereabouts, and you can't say there's zero return from having a minor league baseball stadium. Not, not to mention, when we had Mississippi State, we have local other colleges, we usually packed the, the stadium for three or four nights, uh, and there's a lot of hotel rooms that benefit, there's some retail that benefits. We mentioned the Keesler Federal sponsorship that benefits. Uh, plus, we have a, a Biloxi Shuckers baseball team going into these other markets from Tennessee to Charlotte to all across the country, playing games with that Biloxi Shucker, and people are saying, hey, there's a Biloxi team, and it brands Biloxi. I don't know how much you, you would pay for that marketing if you had to spend money in those other markets. There's certainly opportunity, and I'm glad you mentioned that we're, we're pursuing that, and we might, may be able to see some more increased benefits. The, the thing that we fell short of, when, when the stadium was built, we anticipated that there would be many concerts and other related events that never really transpired.
Yeah.
Uh, attendance is a little over 2,000 per game, as I understand it, talking to the Shuckers management, uh, which that's, that's okay. You know, it's not less than 1,000, at least we're, we're putting over 2,000 people per game on average, uh, in the stadium. That's a good thing. Um, when I go to the games, you see people that are reunited, you see people that live five miles from each other, and it's the first time they've seen each other at a, a, you know, in the City of Biloxi, and you see them kindling those relationships. So I don't, I don't want to say the, the glass is full, um, but I, I think there's many opportunities, and I think the Shuckers, what they've contributed nearly over a decade has been positive, more, more so than negative. That's just my opinion. Any rebuttal from anybody?
Just if I may, one thing?
Yeah, sure.
And I'm not sure if that was meant for me. I didn't mean to get...
No, it's not meant for you, just in general, I promise.
No, no, that's okay. I, but, and again, I'm going to stress that I am a huge baseball fan. I go to baseball games all the time at Shucker Stadium. If we looked at the numbers, I'm 100% confident we are losing money there. I hate it, I love it, I want them to stay, I just wish there were more things we could do to make money from the Shucker Stadium and not spend so much like we're doing today. We're spending $165,000. We're approving today. It's got to be approved, we have no way not to approve it. I just wish there was a way we can make more money off of that, and that's all I have. Thank you.
I agree, I agree 100% with you, Councilman. Any other comments?
Real quick, so the maintenance agreement that we have, does that start over on a fiscal calendar or on the calendar? So is it, the maintenance agreement we have, where they have to pay 50% up until we reach a cap, or?
On a FPA basis, right.
So, so, so does that start over October 1st, or does it start over January 1st?
When we put out 50,000.
October 1, and that starts over to where they can start back contributing?
Right.
Okay, and then once they reach their cap, and then we're on the hook for, for the rest of it going forward throughout the year?
If it's applicable.
All right, I have no comments, uh, on the consent agenda, and we'll finish with Mr. Marshall.
Hey, we see on the consent agenda, on item P, just want to make clear that, uh, I'm going to be abstaining from this when we get to that part, where we can, any exceptions? I'd like to make sure that, that I'm not skipped over on that.
Item B? You said item B?
P.
Item B, okay. All right, I'll take the vote on the consent agenda, and then afterwards, if you're abstaining or, or not in favor, we'll take, we'll take those votes after. All in favor of the consent? Those opposed? Motion carries? I'll take the exceptions. Mr. Gray? Mr. Marshall?
Yes, I'm exception, item P.
Mr. Marshall is abstaining from item B.
P.
P, I'm sorry, P, like in Paul. P, like in Paul. Okay. All right, Mr. Nail? Are you, any, any exceptions? No exceptions?
No exceptions.
Creel? Mr. Tisdale?
Uh, yes. Excuse me. Yes, I'm voting no on items T, U, V, W, X, Y. I'll read them again. I'll read them again. T, U, V, W, X, Y. That's it. Thank you.
All right. Just want to make sure the clerk has that recorded. Mr. Shoemaker?
No exceptions.
No exceptions.
We have one second.
Even in baseball. Okay.
Let me hold one second, let me get a chance to look and see what that is. With all talk, you just give me one minute.
All right. We'll pause for a moment. Mr. Marshall is looking at the items.
The arrangements.
Mr. Tisdale is, has some exceptions on.
We need a minute. True.
Mr. Tisdale?
Sure.
Can you, why are you doing it? What are we doing here?
Well, we're going to be, we've been talking about budget for a number of weeks, and we've been sort of tracking what money we're using, losing out on when we waive certain fees. So based on what I've heard over the last week, that's where I am today. I just don't think we need to be approving, waiving, excuse me, waiving deposits or rental fees. That's, that'll be my position from here on out, by the way. So, nothing personal, it's just, it is a really, really big money. Thank you.
Good. All right. You got those recorded? Okay. All right. We'll move on to code enforcement hearings. Mr. Creel? You're up.
Item A, Robert J. Budholm. 2042 Crane Ridge, that case has been resolved. Item B, Sang Tran, 150 Rosetti Street, that case has been resolved. Item C, Irma F. Prossacet in June Golf, 643 Walker Street, that case has been resolved. Item D, Sheila McIntyre, 515 Esters Boulevard, that case has been resolved. Item E, Bernice E. Whitney Estate, 2178 Pops Ferry Road, that case has been resolved. Item F, Maria Angelica Veras Tigway, 286 Wall Street, that case has been resolved. Item G, Jerry L. Scott Estate, 177 Daisy Street, that case has been resolved. Item H, Thou On Don, 152 Pine Street, that case has been resolved. Item I, Anthony J. Arsenault Jr., 259 Porter Avenue, that case has been resolved. Item J, Starks Investment Properties LLC, 0 Pops Ferry Road, that case has been resolved. Item K, Sophia L. Pham, 367 Forest Avenue, this property's still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Sophia L. Pham, 367 Forest Avenue? There being none, this case is closed.
Item L, Vance Brumball, 13162 Hudson Crowne Road, that case has been resolved. Item N, Glenn J. Sosa, 1737 Thomas Jefferson Drive, that case has been resolved. Item N, Craig B. Upton, 1040 Division Street, that case has been resolved. Item O, Michael A. Jones, 150 Pine Street, this property's still in violation.
Anyone here to speak on behalf of Michael A. Jones, 150 Pine Street? There being no one, this case is closed.
Item P, Christopher Michael and Cynthia T. Sullivan, 148 Pine Street, that case has been resolved. Item Q, Cindy Sang Tran, 321 Keller Avenue, this case has been resolved. Item R, David M. and Abigail Schaefer, 371 Belvedere Circle, this property's still in violation.
Anyone here to speak on behalf of David M. and Abigail Schaefer, 371 Belvedere Circle? There being no one, this case is closed.
Item S, Professional Builders and Remodel LLC, 305 Belvedere Drive, that case has been resolved. Item T, John B. Joyce III, Etol, 163 Begonia Street, that case has been resolved. Item U, Freddie L. Lane III and Freddie Lane Jr., 2041 South Drive, that case has been resolved. Item V, Extended Stay LLC, 590 Beach Boulevard, this property's still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Extended Stay LLC, 590 Beach Boulevard? There being no one, this case is closed.
Item W, Urban Transitional Living LLC, 273 Quirons Avenue, that case has been resolved. Item X, Chan Tran, 173 Dory Street, that case has been resolved. Item Y, Ewan Tran, 167 Hoxey Street, that case has been resolved. Item Z, Ewan Tran, 169 Hoxey Street, that case has been resolved.
All right. Thank you. Need a motion on the routine? So, moved by Mr. Creel. Do I have a second? Mr. Shoemaker? Mr. Creel?
Well. Well.
That's it, Council? How much money we got? He wants to.
Oh, I agree. I didn't want to get hit myself.
Well, no, I figured it was a routine, agenda stuff.
We are at, just actually called before the council meeting, MEMA, confirm. They have $751,000 in the Mississippi PA website. It's in what they call step three of five. When it gets to step four, then it starts moving its way down here. So we have a conference call this Thursday with MEMA, and we're going to ask them to press the little button or do the approvals to get it to step four, and then it'll start making its way down here. So hopefully by our first meeting in September, or the next following meeting in September, that money will be here, and I'll be able to apply that to the council.
Perfect. Awesome. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
On item A, spoke with Jamie on the football gear, so we've decided to go with flag football for age groups 10 and under, and then tackle 11 and 12. Okay. And then the equipment is according based on registration. And registration is looking, when does it expire to register?
Pretty much, I think.
Registration up, down?
A little bit down, but up in check.
Yep. Okay. Yeah, it's new. It'll be new, especially for sure for flag, correct? We just changed that? Perfect. Thank you.
Mr. Shoemaker?
I have nothing.
Okay. Anyone else have anything to add for the routine? All right. All in favor of the routine, agenda? Those opposed? Motion carries? As I stated earlier, I'd like to make a motion to close in memory of Marcus Dickie. Second? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by everybody. All in favor? Opposed? We stand, need a motion for recess? That was a motion to recess, right?